We will now call the regular meeting of Franklin City Council to order. Welcome everyone here. A reminder, please turn off of your, off your cell phones or place them in vibrate mode. And we have invocation tonight by Ward One.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for blessing us today and allowing us to gather tonight to conduct the city's business. We ask your guidance as on finalizing the budget of the city. We also ask your guidance in directing the city forward into the future. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you now please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now move right into citizens' time. The first on our list is Mr. Herman Parker.
Greetings, everyone. Um, I'd like to say that I hope that we can all come to mind and come up with some kind of finances for the better for the citizens of the town. Uh, I feel like that there's a solution to this problem, we just got to find it. And I hope and pray with everybody's help that we'll be able to do this. Um, I speak for the citizens that there are still some high light bills. Uh, I do have a question I'd like to ask. Um, on some meters, they've got them covered up where you can't read them now. And I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, or if y'all know anything about it, but you won't know unless somebody tells you. Uh, I thought that the citizens were supposed to be able to read their meters and get an idea of what their readings was. I know one case where there's two households that have the meters covered up where they can't read what's going on. Um, by any chance, is that legal, or what do we have to do to improve that?
If you have equipment issues or questions, please see Mr. Mark Bly of the Electric Department. That is his, um, area to handle the electric equipment.
Okay. All right. Okay, and another thing I came up with was, I brought this up once before. We have a recycle place here in Franklin. I don't know if the city deals with them or not, but I talked to the guy about eight months ago. And I was talking to him about the recycle cans that we have, instead of paying somebody out of Smithfield, we could probably, a lot of people could take them theirself and get money for the refuge of the recycle. And Butler said that, you know, I think he told me that what, what recycle that, uh, Smithfield gets is dumped over there anyway. But I just wanted to find out how, you know, we could get that off of our bill, because that's really what the extension on our bill is, the trash and the stuff like that. And there, it's just solutions I'm throwing here, you know, in hopes that we can work with that somehow or another, take, just have it where we only pay the light bill. And that would cut back on a lot of expenditures for the citizens of Franklin. And that's basically all I have to say on this. Um, I just, it's just a few ideas I'm throwing at you.
All right. Thank you for your ideas. Mr. Russ Pace is Director of Public Works and he would answer your questions. So if you would see Mr. Pace, please. Mr. Parker's address is 303 North High Street. I want to ask you, please, when you come up, give your name and address. I have you, Mr. Parker. You're okay. Thank you.
My name is Charles Grant, deal 208 Bank Street, Franklin. I'm here to talk about, little about this, how you should be. Uh, well, this, how you should bill ain't just started. It been hard a good while. But on the way, we've been trying to survive. That, uh, we had to worry about the other stuff being so hard. And then it come to, done caught up with the light bill. You take gas, food, and all that stuff, doctor bill, and done pushed us kind of in a corner. And then talking about going up again, and they gonna put this fudgel in the corner. And, uh, and I hope y'all can understand that and try to think about that when you come down this, the other voting on the bill and everything, called a citizen, just about going fudgled the can, 'cause you don't want half of the citizens in Franklin be on the system. Everybody going to wear FAS seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas and Myrtle Patterson? Thomas and Myrtle Patterson?
Good evening, Mayor Ashburn, Vice Mayor Chitam, members of the City Council, City Manager and City Attorney. I am Reverend Jamal Brian Whitehurst, located at 308 Madison Street here in the city of Franklin, Virginia. And I came tonight to speak on behalf of the utility bill. It has been a growing problem. It has affected so many citizens in our community. And I recognize that utility, the utility billing, we pay directly to the city of Franklin, but the service provider is someone else. And I recognize also in other localities that this, we pay our services, they, um, other localities pay their services directly to the service provider. I was wondering if there's any way possible that City Council members could look into possibly the city of Franklin paying its utility, utility billing to the service provider instead of the city of Franklin. It is a growing problem, um, and it has been protested more than once. And I feel that the City Council should come together as one, that everyone be included in the process of looking at this situation, because it is affecting so many when utility bills are extremely high. People are unable to go to the stores and purchase items that they need. They can't, um, support their families as they need to. And I feel that it's something that the City Council collectively as one should look into. And I feel that the City Council as one should come with ideas that can help the citizens that it serves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody doing. My name is Brian Robinson. I'm an assistant representative for the concerned-
Could you pull the mic down a little bit, please? Thank you.
My name is Brian Robinson. I work for the concerned citizen. I'm an assistant representative for the utility bill dispute. My agenda is, uh, Rosalyn Saunders, that's my mother, she had got a bill for this month for seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. I hold in my hand right now the payments that she had made between the month of January to the month of May. She had made three payments for the month of May. Stop organization I gave her, had pledged two hundred and thirty dollars to y'all. My mother, my mother paid one seventy. Now, the total amount she made to y'all was, total amount was a thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars sixty-seven cents. Now, she get a bill that say seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, and my agenda is, how can someone pay so much if she had paid, payment made between the month of January? Now, in the month of June, she got a bill that say seven hundred, and it's past due says, the date on it was four twenty-five of twenty thirteen to the five twenty eighth of twenty thirteen. And this, the bill I have right here, is dated on June. Now, the payments that she made between, that she was told was backup payments, is all the payments she had made. And the total amount was a thousand five hundred fifty-eight sixty-seven. Now, to me, her bill should not be seven hundred for the month of June, it should be at least a hundred. But like I said, it's different amounts here, and I'm just here to bring that out to y'all attention. And for like us, and for the month, someone, Mr. Topman, I guess it was him, came to the house one morning without us knowing and changed all our meters for upstairs and for downstairs. The day they turn up, y'all turn our lights off, upstairs had light go off. And I, my, my agenda is, I would like to have information and know if my mother's paying upstairs as well, 'cause her bill seem not to go down. And the landlord had changed everything in the house, wise with electricity and wise, and she still have a certain hundred and something dollars that she don't want with usage. And that's my agenda. Thank you for listening.
All right. Mr. Robinson, your mother, um, will need to speak with Joyce Johnson. She is in charge of the electric billing.
No, I thank you.
Councilman Macklemore? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Robinson, your address is 612 North Highs?
My name is Greg Macklemore, 204 Madison Street. And, um, I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing the citizens after saying that we weren't going to deal with it, allowing the citizens to express themselves. Uh, in sad state of our local government, when an elected official as myself is forced to speak during citizens' time to comment on his concerns or notify the public regarding city-related businesses. However, I have a few statements that concern me, and I would like to ask this body to indulge. First off, as to the allegations in the Tidewater News and conduct on becoming a councilman made by my colleague, I emphatically deny any involvement, participation, organization, orchestration, or membership with any disgruntled group, including the one led by the Bishop Reverend Dr. Johnson claiming to represent any citizens of Franklin for personal gain or anyone planning or participating in any picketing or boycotts whatsoever. I do not believe, I do believe in the methods of civil, um, civil, the civil rights movements and the teachings of Mahatma Gandhi and nonviolent passive resistance as a method to move oppressive governments' treatment. However, the paper, in its continued attempt to assassinate my character, has twisted comments to serve its own purposes. Which brings me to my next concern. It has been brought since my last time speaking here on behalf of the citizens. It has been brought to my attentions that, um, a citizen has been solicited, or a couple of citizens have been solicited by the Franklin Police Department in conjunction with the Commonwealth Attorney to provide them with assistance to gain incriminating information-
Mr. Macklemore, Mr. Macklemore, unless you have documentation, and you would have to take that to the courts, this is not the arena for that.
I'm alerting this council with my right of free speech that the people with under-
The free speech would have to be in the court.
So, first of all, I haven't, I haven't bashed anyone. I'm informing you as to what a citizen brought to my attention.
Okay. Mr. Macklemore, please be quiet. Let me say this. Any issue that this body can control is entertained. With your allegations towards any police department is a civil issue, and it will have to be taken up in court.
Well, I would prefer not to have to sue the city in which I sit on the board.
You do as you please.
I don't want to sue the city.
That is your right. I'm sorry. Move on, please.
Move on, the next allegation, I'll, I'll hold off on the rest of that since you won't allow me the right of free speech during my five minutes. And I haven't bashed anyone, and you're denying me my rights. But that's all right. Next, I want to go on record as having been threatened with bodily harm and impending doom by the mayor's husband on several occasions, as recently as yesterday.
Chief, please, have Mr. Macklemore taken away.
Where?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Macklemore, you can join, Mr. Ma, Mr. Macklemore, wait just a minute, please. Mr. Macklemore? Mr. Macklemore, you can have your seat on the dice up here and act in your capacity as counsel. But anything about any personal issues will not be discussed here. This council cannot do anything about what you were talking about. So, please.
Is it because now you don't want a puppet to see?
Look, Mr. Macklemore, if you are not going to control yourself, please leave. You can either have your seat here. We have adopted rules, citizen time rules, and they will be adhered to in this arena.
I did not violate a citizen time.
Edna King, Mrs. Edna King, is our chairperson of the school board, and she is asked to speak at citizens' time.
Is this, um, clear with speed relative to the public hearing call?
No. If you have a public hearing issue, you can do it at that time, when we open the public Before we go on, I'd like to ask our attorney, have, has everything been acted on in decent and order, in order here?
In my opinion, yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. We will now move on to amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will go to the consent agenda. They are minutes from the May thirteenth meeting, the May twentieth meeting. Are there any comments?
Yeah, I just like to ask, Madam Mayor, ma'am, I just like to ask the question in regards to, uh, work session, um, minutes. Did we have any, Mr. Martin? I'm in.
They're, they're not complete. They'll be at the next, uh, meeting for action.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Does anyone else have any question or concern or corrections to the May thirteenth or the May twentieth minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to adopt the minutes of the May thirteenth and the May twentieth meeting. The May thirteenth are minutes from our regular city council meeting, and the May twentieth are from our closed session that we interviewed, um, Franklin City School Board candidates. Are there any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Next, we have a resolution, Mr. Martin, for the Virginia retirement system.
Yes, uh, annually, we're required, uh, the city council elected to phase in the new legislative requirements for a one percent increase, excuse me, a five percent employee contribution for VRS. Uh, the city elected to do this on a phased-in basis, one percent per year. This resolution would do the second installment of that, increase our contribution from employees to two percent. And then going forward, we'd do it one percent a year, unless the council choose to do it more aggressively in future years.
Are there any questions about the resolution? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to adopt the resolution for the Virginia retirement Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye. Uh, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Miss ma'am?
Yes.
I have an emergency phone call.
All right. Next, we have the need for an approval for a contract for the Infant and Toddler Connection of Virginia between the City of Franklin and the Department of Behavior, Behavioral Health and Development Services. Mr. Martin?
I will defer to the city attorney to present this.
Madam Mayor, this is a contract that we sign on an annual basis. The city is being asked to serve as a local lead agency in this matter. It's a contract really where we utilize the Children's Center to perform all the services required. Rosalyn Cutchins is in the back. She is the acting executive director of the Children's Center at this time, and so if you have any specific questions about, um, the program, who is served, and the funding that is utilized, she's more knowledgeable and would be better able to explain to you how the program works. Basically, the city serves as, um, the funding agency, the, the Department of Behavioral, um, what is that stuff? Behavioral Health and Development Services actually pays the money into the city, and then we pay the money into the Children's Center.
A transfer, just like we have for years with them?
Yes, ma'am. The years and years.
Are there any questions? Do anyone want to, Mrs. Cutchins?
She's here.
To come up? Did you go? No questions?
This preliminary, we do this year after year?
Mm-hmm.
We're just a fiscal agent.
Okay. If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve the contract for the Infant and Toddler Connection of Virginia. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Next, we have the need for an approval of a donation agreement between Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the City of Franklin. Is that Mr. Williams again?
No, I would recommend, Chief Holt, come up and, uh, comment on this. Just ba, basic background, this is a requirement for us to access certain equipment if we have an emergency situation declared. Chief?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, City Manager Martin and City Attorney, Mr. Williams, we have an opportunity to, uh, basically receive a donation from the Hampton Roads, um, Planning District Commission. And what it is, it's a shelter support unit. It's a trailer that's got, uh, different shelter supplies. Should we have to open one of our shelters during an emergency situation, or if we had a mass casualty event where we had a lot of citizens that were hurt or injured, um, due to some type of, uh, event, whether it be a natural disaster, man-made disaster, this would give us supplies that we could have at our shelter to treat any citizens that might be coming into the shelter injured. You could have a situation where the hospital was majorly affected by that same incident, so they might not be able to receive the patients as we carry them to the hospital. So basically, it'd allow us to set up a triage-type area to where we could offer treatment to our citizens, um, prior to making arrangements to either transport them to our own hospital or have them transported to a, uh, the next closest hospital. Basically, the, uh, we're be, being given an opportunity to accept a donation of a trailer that's worth about twenty thousand dollars, and the supplies within that trailer is a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the only obligation that we have is the, the maintenance on the trailer, such as the, um, license on the trailer, and then just the routine maintenance of, for maintaining that trailer, which would be very limited. My estimate would be probably about two hundred and fifty dollars a year is what it would cost us to, to maintain the trailer. As far as the supplies in the trailer, they are all furnished by, by grant funds, and as though those expire, they will be replaced by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. So there's very little responsibility other than us, you know, maintaining the, the trailer, having it at a, a location that we can keep it hooked up to shore power, which, uh, allows for temper, temperature control within the trailer that helps to make sure that some of your supplies do not go bad. And, and then also, we would get it to the shelter at the time of, time of need and provide the staff and, um, to basically use the supplies there in that, in that trailer. We have an agreement that we have to sign to accept that donation, and I'd stand before you tonight to just ask y'all's permission and support to sign that agreement, so we can accept that donation that will greatly enhance our emergency response capabilities during a major disaster or a mass casualty event.
Are there any questions for Chief Holt?
Is that a new, is that new to us? Is this something new that's going around?
Yes, sir. It's, it's new. It's, um, I think it's sixteen localities that make up the Hampton Roads Planning District, and we're, I think, the fourteenth locality, maybe even the fifteenth locality that will be receiving a trailer. They sort of looked at population bases, and you became the order, the order that you received one was pretty much based on your, your population. And if the money held out, well, fortunately, the money held out long enough for us to receive one. So I think the only other locality that might be waiting to receive one would be Southampton, but all other localities, to my knowledge, have, have received a similar unit.
And this trailer wa, is for a mass?
Casualty.
Casualty, mass disaster.
And typically, the way you define that, it would be anything that, any type of incident that has exceeded your existing resources that you have locally to, to respond to. So basically, um, our, our ambulances are tied up, and we're starting to diminish our supplies on our ambulance, so this would be a fallback to that. It would give us another, um, source to get supplies from until we could get more resources in here to, to help us. Um, you know, a situation like they experienced in Oklahoma with the tornadoes coming through, you know, you could have, uh, a situation where you, some of your resources that you're looking to respond or have been damaged by the event. So this, this would be something that we could fall back on and, and get some of the critical, essential, uh, resources that you, that you might need early on until we could get more help in here for, for a major event.
Right. Yeah. This is one of the benefits that we're going to be receiving, that we do receive from Hampton Roads, albeit one that's more visible than most of the benefits we do receive from them. But this is something that's, uh, would be, I think, a benefit for us as a city.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Chief Holt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council.
Entertain a motion on the approval of a donation agreement?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve a donation agreement between Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the City of Franklin. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. And now it's public hearing time. We have two public hearings. We will receive Ward Six School Board nominations, so we're gonna open the public hearing now, ask any citizen who wants to come forward for the purpose of nominating Ward Six School Board replacement of Ms. Philhart, Cindy Philhart. And just before you do, Ms. Philhart, I see you're here, and thank you for your service.
Hi, I'm Catherine Connor-
Hi, I'm Katherine Connor from 148 Crescent Drive in Franklin. I would like to nominate Donna Walton for the Ward Six position on the school board and I have a resume of hers to turn in.
All right, and what was the name again?
Donna Walton.
Donna Walton. W-A-L-T-O-N?
Yes, first name D-A-W-N-A.
D-A-W-N-A. And would you please give the resume to our attorney? I'm sorry, I'm Ms. Katherine?
Connor.
Connor. Are there other nominations for Ward Six School Board? If so, please come forward. Are there other nominations for Ward Six School Board replacement? This is to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Philhart. Are there other nominations for Ward Six School Board? If not, we will close the public portion of the public hearing and entertain council discussion on interview process.
I think it worked really well the way we did it with the Ward Two and Ward Five. I'd like to see us move forward in that regard.
I agree.
I agree, just Saturday.
Could you do it Monday since you already have a meeting?
That's what I was wondering.
If she's available?
We need plenty of time for budget so we don't want to interfere on the 6:30 to, it would have to be earlier. Can everyone? So it's 6 o'clock Monday, okay?
That's too early, how about 6:15?
No, we need either 6 o'clock.
Is she here?
So what are we going to do?
So we will have, if Ms. Walton can come, we will schedule, ask the city manager to schedule a meeting with her for the purpose of just interviewing and becoming familiar with one another on June 17th at 6 o'clock. And now, we will move on to the public hearing for our proposed 2013-14 budget. Mr. Williams?
Madam Mayor, I have the certificate of publication where the notice for the public hearing was advertised in the Tidewater News on June 2nd and it's required that this be submitted as part of the record. So if we could, that needs to be included in the minutes for this meeting.
All right.
Just for the purpose of those interested, I'll just give an overview of the public hearing notice. It's rather lengthy, so I will not read it all. Council has given notice and it's been properly advertised and just attested by the city attorney for the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013. For the city, has been submitted to the council and has been available for some time now for public inspection at various locations specified in the notice. The Franklin City Council tonight is holding a public hearing as required on the proposed budget that will fund city operations from July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, including operating and capital improvement budgets for city funds. And that's the purpose of tonight's gathering. The proposed fiscal year city budget for all funds is recommended to be $54,290,659. This is a $465,935 decrease below the 2012-2013 budget as amended, which is the current fiscal year. The general fund portion of that budget is $21,648,279. This is a decrease of $875,367 below the prior year budget as amended prior to inter-fund transfers. The decrease in the general fund results primarily from the transfer of Public Works refuse operations to a separate enterprise fund along with a combination of expenditure increases and decreases as detailed in the budget document. The electric fund proposed budget of $15,088,015 is an increase of $425,416 or 2.9% more than the current year budget. This increase is the result of an anticipated 3.6% increase in Dominion Virginia Power's wholesale power cost along with an improved, approved by Dominion, increase in the fuel surcharge paid to the electric power producer supplier by customers. That is a direct pass-through that the city council does not control. The proposed budget includes a recommended rate increase of 3.6% to offset the increase in wholesale power costs from Dominion, which is based on kilowatt hours used. No increase is proposed in the base charges. The net impact on a residential customer using 1,000 kilowatt hours will be $5.78, including the adjustment for fuel and the wholesale power cost increases. The Franklin City Schools FY 2013-2014 proposed operating budget is $16,147,522, which reflects level funding of the city's 2012-2013 base appropriation of $4,837,395 plus a one-time carryover of $643,174 remaining from the FY 2011-2012 budget as audited for combined local appropriation and the operating budget of $5,480,569. In addition, the proposed city budget includes debt service requirements for the schools and the amount of $444,162 for school-related projects. This does not count the capital outlay borrowed funding that was recently closed upon that gives the city schools additional funds, but it does include the first installment of debt service on that, which will only be interest for the first year. But then it will include principal and interest. The total FY 2013-2014 school-related funding from the city's general fund, including debt payments, then becomes $5,924,731. The various other details within the budget notice that were sent out, I'll only hit a couple of highlights. It does not change the current rate for property tax for real estate. That would remain unchanged at 90 cents per $100 of property valuation. No other changes in tax rates are proposed, personal property or otherwise. The fees for collection of garbage, solid waste and other refuse are recommended to be changed. The collection fee is recommended to decrease for residential customers by $2.50 per month to $39.74 per month and remain unchanged for other classifications of customers, the non-residential users. As stated, no other tax rates are proposed for change. The only other fee changes in the base rates would relate to stormwater fees that are related to state mandated changes in the stormwater management program that will necessitate the adoption of a new fee schedule that the council will consider at the time of adoption of the budget. Of course, it is, it is very important that the citizens understand that the city operating budget must be approved by the city council prior to July 1, 2013. Under the current schedule, the council is scheduled to have further work sessions and adopt the budget or consider adoption of the budget at the June 24 city council meeting, two weeks from tonight. The council spent numerous hours and work sessions going through all the elements of the budget detail and in several work sessions already held, including one earlier tonight before the council meeting. The budget is preliminary, it's only proposed by management. It is not the city budget and it has no official capacity until adopted by the city council. That's the conclusion of my overview for the purposes of those in the audience who may desire to comment on the budget, Mayor and City Council. As I stated to you when I presented it, it's been my honor and pleasure to work with the city staff and with you, members of this city council, for the last several months developing goals for the city, budgetary goals and other priorities and putting forth an operating budget proposal for the next fiscal year that will enhance where recommended and maintain other critical service areas going forward. Thank you.
We will now open the public portion of our public hearing on the proposed 2013-14 budget. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
To Mayor Johnson Ashburn, Vice Mayor Cheatham, members of city council, to the city manager, city attorney, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to speak on?
State your name and address, please.
Thank you. Lynwood Johnson, 301 Hall Street, Franklin, Virginia.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. I would like to speak on the budget, the electrical part of the budget. In describing the electrical part of the budget, using the term, we want to lower the user tax fee. The user tax fee, meaning basically primarily the profit margin. Where council has said, which council controls the electrical department in the City of Franklin as being a municipality, whereas Dominion has a 10% profit margin. And when Dominion went over the 10% profit margin, they were penalized and the customers reaped the benefits. They gave the customers a credit. What the concerned citizens are for higher light are asking basically is that the city lower the profit margin. As we calculated the profit margin for the City of Franklin, we got an 88% profit margin. When Dominion went to 19% of a profit margin, they were penalized. We would ask that the City of Franklin would base their profit margin with the state corporation of 10%. Now, what that will do for the city, as before, as we well know, we lost a good business that was coming that would offer about 1,400 jobs to the City of Franklin, good paying jobs that would help the households and people in the City of Franklin because of the user tax being high. The user tax being high, meaning basically everyone is being taxed with this. Not only the poor, the needy, the middle class, the upper class, every citizen in the City of Franklin. And what the problem is basically, how it's reflecting now by the life bill being high because basically, as you know, in the winter it's about 8%, in the summer, starting in June, it's about 15 cents, 15 cents. So basically, if people were struggling in the winter to pay the bill, my God, what are they going to do in the summer, basically, with that? And this is one of the concerns. We feel if we change the profit margin and put it at 10% because as city councils have stated, they have placed for many years money into the general fund and this time, I believe, it's about 1.4 million. Well, if that money could circulate back into the community, into the hands of the citizens where they go to Walmart and other businesses to spend more money, that would create jobs. Also, basically, by dropping that profit margin, it would help other businesses to come to the area of the City of Franklin in the fine industrial park that we are working to develop to bring more businesses in to help tax revenue and the citizens. Well, basically, what happens with a high profit margin, businesses narrow, some businesses I've talked to are spending $3,000 and up in life bill. That's a great strain on businesses. So what we're asking is if you lower the profit margin, it will create prosperity, jobs, and it will help move the city forward. As citizens, we all want that to happen for the City of Franklin. So the user tax, being 88% is too high, reduce it to 10, cut out 78%, basically, and we would have more jobs, more people being able to afford to pay the life bill and to move forward in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. After we've closed the public portion, we will have council discussion. Anyone else wishing to speak for the budget, proposed budget, come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Cara Butler, 103 Barrister Lane in Franklin. Madam Mayor and the honored members of our council, I wanted to speak to you very briefly about funding the library. I urge you to fully fund the library this year. I have two boys in elementary school at S.P. Morton and we go to the library at least twice a week, sometimes even more frequently than that. I know that last year, we were not able to fully fund the library's budget, in the budget. And so the hours of operation had to be cut. That affected me personally, my family, in that we couldn't go to the library on the days that we wanted to go or spend the hours that we wanted to spend there. As a frequent user, it is a sad thing to see the library kicking people out at 5 o'clock because the library closes at 5 o'clock on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. There are lots of users and I think it is a wonderful thing that the City of Franklin has such a wonderful library. And so I do urge you to fully fund the library as set out in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laine Meredith. I live 329 Robin Hood Road in Franklin. I'm here to thank you tonight, Mayor Johnson Ashburn and members of council, city manager, city attorney. Ever since Vice Mayor Kent Pope appointed me to the Board of Directors at the Franklin Library, I've been a passionate patron and sometime volunteer. This is a remarkable library, which we are so fortunate to have in Franklin and we thank you so much for your support and very much appreciative of your support and hope that you will fully fund our budget request for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on our budget, proposed budget? Anyone else wishing to speak on our budget, proposed budget?
Ladies and gentlemen, hello. I'm Linda D. Johnson. I live at 22480 Homestead Lane, Franklin, Virginia. I too am here to thank you for past support for the Franklin Library. I am a six-to-eight-month recent volunteer at the library, and as I volunteer, I see so many good things that the Franklin Library system does. I see it as an extension of the public school system. I have seen teenagers, children, young children, the youth program just cannot be outdone. It's such a great program. There's so many things done there. The staff is wonderful. They go beyond and above the call of duty. And again, I want to thank you for your past support and just hope that you will continue that support like you have in past years. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. We have anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson Ashburn, Mr. Cheatham, other members of city council, Mr. Martin, Mr. Williams. This evening, I speak on behalf of the Franklin City School Board, and we too thank you for all that you've done in the past, and especially for this year, we forged a good relationship with members of the city council. We have met numerous times with you and then the present committee to be sure that we are trying to move our schools in the right direction. It has been a pleasure to do so, and this evening, I speak with pleasure on behalf of the Franklin City School Board, as I previously stated. The school board's total proposed revenue for 2013-14 is $16,889,959, and I think that Mr. Martin stated that well. We based our budget after many meetings, involved detailed meetings, on our carryover from 2012-13 in the amount of $643,174 that has been stated also. Throughout this academic year of 2012-13, most of our appropriations from the federal and state came in much lower than we had planned, and I know you are aware of that. Through our grants that were submitted, every time we got anything back from the federal government state, it was reduced much lower, which meant that our staff always had to go back and make changes this current year in proposed programs. The school division has been most frugal in the management of expenditures. In many instances, our teachers and central office staff spent their personal money to defray the cost of planned activities, especially to cover some of those things that we had planned to implement for which our funds were reduced. And considering that you are funding us at a level of $142,758 less than we planned, this means or equates to approximately two and a half staff members. When we look at the rate at which we bring teachers in, that will equate on an average of two and a half faculty members. But it also means then that we must make adjustments in our proposed expenditures for next year. Chances are, we are at the point where we will have to look at those adjustments being in staff. We haven't done that in the past. I've been on the school board now for three years, and we have not had to remade every effort we possibly could to not reduce our staff because the one thing that we have tried to stress in marketing our school division, in marketing our system, in making it appear, appeal to other people to come and work with us and to encourage them to stay here, has been that of a lower class size, and that has been significant in helping us to make decisions as to where we would place emphasis in retaining staff. Our employees have not had a raise in more than three years. It's impossible for us to go another day without making it a priority, and this year we've done that in our budget. We started out with a projection of 4% as a proposed salary increase. Then it became 3%, and when we look at what you're going to do in terms of keeping our carryover from last year, then that would mean that we probably have it down to 2%. I might be the one doing that, 2%. Our employees leave next week, and we would like very much to have for them a documentation of their 2013-14 salaries. To be honest, I'm surprised that we waited this long to adopt our city budget. I don't know what has influenced this, but it makes it very challenging for us as a school division when we are at this point where our contracts need to go out and we don't know what the salaries of our employees will be. In addition to asking you to move with some expediency in adopting your budget in order that we can then tell our employees what their salaries are going to be, I am also asking you to consider giving us our entire carryover from 2012-13. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to our proposed budget? If there is no one else, we will close the public portion of our budget, and before we start discussions, I would like to thank the school board superintendent, we have the vice chair of the school board here with us also, the superintendent, we have some principals, I see Will in the back, school board member. So we do appreciate your attendance and the relationship that we forged this year. Thank you. Open the discussion on the budget?
You know, when you're doing a budget, one of the things that you really have to be real cognizant of is that you have actual numbers, and I'd like a little input from our finance director, but I was just up here doing a little math. If I calculate it correctly, our gross profit on the electric fund historically has been 14% one year, 25% the next year. This year, we're budgeting a 26% gross profit. Gross profit is before our operating expenses, which is going to knock it down. So out of a $14,800,000, $14,830,000 of revenue, we're going to show about a $1.6 million profit. I haven't done all the math all the way through, but I don't know where the 88% number that came from because 13, I wish we did have an 88% profit. That would be wonderful, but I can't make any of those numbers kind of work out.
Mr. Burgess, I tried as well, and I couldn't get close.
Yeah. So I think we need to...
I think that's a good point, and we need to know exactly what the margin is. So for Monday, if the manager could come back with that, please.
I also would like to just point out, I hear what the citizens are saying, but at the same time, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that we've had a 22% increase in our electric rates from Dominion Resources since our new contract went in, and we've had 17% worth of increases to our citizens. So we have eaten 5% of our increases, and our cash has decreased to a severe point that if we were to have, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to have a disaster like a hurricane, we do not have the reserves where we could buy the equipment to pull us back up in line. We'd have to come to the general fund to fund that. We do not have the cash to be able to go out and buy the telephone poles and the wiring to be able to get us back up and running in the length of time that our citizens have grown used to. So we have to balance all that out to make sure that we cover the system and we handle our utility department in a fashion that can provide electricity to the citizens at all times. So I want to, those are my understanding of what we've kind of talked about here. If I missed anything or overstated it, I, any feedback?
I think you did miss one thing that keeps being overlooked. Several years ago, we were taking over $2 million a year from the electric fund to the city, and now we're taking much, much less than that.
Two and a half.
Two and a half million, thank you. We were cutting it down 150,000 a year, and I think it was last year, it was the first year that we had not done that, and it's not scheduled for this year. So it has been greatly reduced, and the only way we did that was cutting the city's expenditures as well. But a lot of people have forgotten the fact that it was way, way up there, and it has been greatly reduced, and I think anybody who has investments, as the city does, and the electric company, should expect some type of return on their money to help upray other costs.
I'd like to say a plan for further reductions is going to be discussed, but the system was designed to supplement the general fund for police services, EMT services, and school services, and most of us or all of us use one or all of those services. So we have to keep in mind that operations of those departments come from the portion of the electric fund that is transferred into the general fund for operations.
If I may say one more thing, that would equate to about a 24 cent increase if all things were held equal in real estate taxes.
And real estate taxes, and this is just my opinion, should not be the only tax that would bear that burden.
Right.
So we would have to discuss some other way, some other structure to recoup those revenues for the services that we all use. Anyone else on the electric, since we're on the electric?
No.
No?
Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor, I would like to comment. Sometimes it's a misnomer to use the word profit in governmental entities in comparisons with private utilities or publicly owned utilities and investor-owned utilities. There's quite a distinction in what happens with quote-unquote profit. An investor-owned utility situation like described with Dominion, that truly goes to the investors, the shareholders in that private corporation. In terms of the city, it goes into reserves, cash reserves, emergency reserves, capital improvement reserves. There are monies transferred into fund, they're paid in lieu of taxes because any of those other utilities have to pay taxes, so they also contribute, if you will, to the municipal governments in which they're located. There was an article in a recent paper that described how many millions of dollars Dominion pays to the various entities where they're located. They pay very little in Franklin because they have very little facilities here that they actually are taxable because the city owns the bulk of the operations. So there are significant distinctions between a public utility, publicly owned utility. Our shareholders are the citizens and property owners and taxpayers of the city of Franklin, and they're charged through their city council to be their representatives to manage that entity and the resources and investments and so forth. And as pointed out, the council has policies that require minimum levels of reserves necessary to properly operate a utility of the size we have. I'll be glad to comment further and prepare additional information for the city council as you further evaluate the budget before you consider adoption on the 24th related to that, but we have discussed that on numerous occasions, and it was included in some of your goal discussions, as the mayor pointed out. To continually review this, you actually do it every budget year before you consider adoption of the budget, and as pointed out by the vice mayor, the city council came up with a plan to reduce it by 150,000 over several budget years to the current level. There's nothing to prohibit you from doing that, but there is a balance that needs to be struck because it will adversely impact other service areas and rates if it goes without a significant reduction in service to the customers that they have grown accustomed to. And that's one thing we don't get complaints about is the level of service and professionalism and how quickly we respond to outages, and we have an exemplary record in that regard for our citizens, and we constantly get compliments from the citizens on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the electric portion? I'd like to ask a question because I'm evidently off-base on this. I was under the impression that the 142,000-plus was a carryover from the year 2011-12. It went into the 12-13 budget.
Actually, it was the prior year, 10-11, that went into the current year budget, 11-12. Excuse me, 12-13.
Yeah, I think she had it.
I was right. Okay.
I thought you said 11-12.
I did.
But it's not. It's 10-11 carryover.
10-11 that went into 12, so it skipped a year?
Yeah, because we have to wait until the audit is done. Am I correct in that, Melissa? Yeah.
Okay, so it was 10...
For example, the 643,000 or 600,000-plus in this year is 11-12.
I want to get to that, but I got to get this...
That's coming from June 30 of '12.
Okay, but wait a minute. Go back to the 142.
Yes.
That was 10...
June 30 of '11, audited numbers.
Okay, so it went into the 12-13?
Correct.
Went into the 12-13 budget?
Yes, it's one year in arrears because we have to wait for the audit to be completed by mid-year.
Okay, so the system did get the 142-plus thousand?
In the current fiscal year budget.
Okay. So the 600-plus thousand, would you now address that? I'm trying to...
Yeah, that is the audited carryover that was completed, the audit completed June 30 of 2012, that the school system did not expend, and the current year budget recommendation includes appropriation of those funds back to the school system in totality. It's important, one thing for everyone to understand, that I pointed out in the budget documents, I'll try to be brief and just characterize it as simple as I can without getting too deep in the details, but that money is reserves that were created as a result, that money being the 143,000 or roughly, and the 600-plus thousand, that's what's created as a result of the efforts of the school system that they did not expend before year end, before June 30. I think it's important, and I've discussed this with the superintendent, that we reward the school system for not expending money by allowing them to carry those funds over into the next available fiscal year, once they're audited and accounted for. The advantage of that, I think, one, it enhances the school system's likelihood to not rush to spend money that they might otherwise not need to, as bad as some of the needs they're going to have in a subsequent budget year. So I think it's a good system, but it's also very, very important to understand that those are monies that were in reserve because they weren't spent. They're not there the next year for continued appropriation. They're used, they're gone. That reduces our reserves by that equivalent amount. For example, if the budget recommendation this year did not include the 640-some-thousand dollars of recommended carryover, then the city's general fund reserves would... then the city's general fund reserves would, would include those monies as they did in the audit, and they'd stay there. But once they're spent, it's not like a tax or any other revenue source, it's gone. Those monies do not exist any longer. The only way they would continue to exist is if the city, if the school system did not spend the hundred and forty-three thousand this year in this current year budget, and at the end of the year, they have a, that same amount. Then those monies would go into the general fund reserves and be available for reappropriation. But we won't know that until next year's audit is complete, and it, it'll be whatever it is. This year was an extraordinarily large amount, in my opinion, over six hundred thousand dollars, compared to the prior year of only a hundred and forty-some thousand dollars. But it is reserves, once they're spent, they're gone.
Okay, so, the, the current budget does include the six hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Correct, the recommendation includes the six hundred and, whatever that number is.
Six forty-three, one second.
I think, what, I just wanted to make sure, and I, I just needed the clarification, that the one forty-two plus and the six hundred was not taken away from the schools?
No, no.
Okay.
Another way to maybe visualize this is there, there's a base appropriation each year. And I've read what that number is, I think it was four point eight million for the current year budget. When we added the hundred and forty-some thousand dollar carryover from a previous year, that's how we arrived at the current year budget funding level for the schools. That base amount stays constant until it doesn't change with the addition of carryover. It only changes if the city council increases the base, which you have the right to do. And we discussed that in work sessions. As manager and budget officer, I prepared a budget that kept the base the same and approved, recommend, or recommended an entire carryover be funded, six hundred and thousand plus. And that's how we're, where we're at. If the council chooses to increase the base, you can't do the carryover again of the hundred and forty because it doesn't exist. You'd have to increase the base to increase their allocation.
And I do agree that we need to explore increasing the base, but that's not at this budget, in this proposed budget.
It's not, it's not included. It would be a decision that the city council would have to make.
Are there any comments?
Well, I just, the, I think the numbers kind of get all turned around when you start trying to put them in a, a bucket, and it's hard to keep up with them. And to me, the bottom line is, we're giving the, the schools the carryover. It's money that they can use, but it's not money that they can depend on to have from year to year. So, that creates an issue for them. What, what we really need to look at going forward is how do we increase the base? Because that's the, that's the money they can depend on having year in and year out for salary increases or additional teachers or additional classrooms or whatever they're going to have. So, that's something we'll just kind of have to work through to see how we can do that.
And, and one other comment I would like to make in regard to, and very well said, councilman. And that's why in the budget document and in the, all the transmittals and discussions we've had, I've tried to emphasize that the carryover funds need to be, you know, it's, it's the city coun, it's, it's the city council makes the appropriation, then the school board has the authority to decide how those funds are spent. And yet I've cautioned them during work sessions, not caution them, that sounds too threatening for my approach. I'd like, I'd rather say I've given them some guidance that they need to use those funds with that in mind, what you just said, that they are not recurring funds, and, and the use of those should be made accordingly. Because next year, if, if the end of this current year budget, if the funds, if they were to have zero carryover, then there would be zero available for appropriation to a future budget. And so, yet the base would remain the same. So, unless the city council approves an increase, and the school board then would have the use of those funds.
I don't remember that size carryover being available. So, I want to commend the schools on being, managing your budget because that is a sizable carryover. That's great. Anyone else comments on the schools?
Yes, I would just like to thank Dr. Bill and the school board for all they do for our children. You really deserve it. You work very hard, and I know that. And thank you for your service.
I'd like to say thanks for the, the school board. Appreciate your service and looking forward to working with you and the schools in the following year.
We do know and we realize that teacher pay needs addressing, and glad you're doing the three percent. And you have not had a raise, your teachers have not had a raise in three years, four years. Our, our employees are five years. So, we understand because we're going through the same situations. Any other comments as it relates to our budget? Hearing none. Financial, April financial report, Ms. Rollins?
Good evening, Mayor Ashburn, Vice Mayor Chitam, council members, Mr. Martin and Mr. Williams.
Mayor, could I interrupt just for a second? I don't know if the library folks have already left, but I just wanted to mention, for clarity, the recommendation included in the budget for library appropriations is the total amount requested by the regional library this year. I just want to make sure that was on the record.
And I just, I did not see any present. I hope I didn't look over anyone, that's why I did not bring it up.
Just left over here, but I was also going to say that last year, we didn't cut their budget. We level funded their budget from our perspective. From their perspective, we cut what they asked for, which happened to be a raised amount of money that they were giving their employees. And this year, that includes that amount with that little bit of an increase if we approve this budget. So, it just took two years' time. I have more problem with their contract, which they're supposed to be bringing forth to us at some point. And that's the, if another entity such as us did not budget what they wanted, we get cut, the surrounding entities get hurt because it goes by usage. To my opinion, and in our discussion, and the mayor was there, as was the city manager, that probably should be averaged out over a two-year period and not use one year as a picture to use for the, for going up on that.
Ms. Rollins, thank you for your patience.
No problem. I'll be very brief. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review the April financial that was presented in your agenda material. Just very briefly on page one of the report, I tried to highlight where the city stands at the end of April thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen in terms of the various property taxes. At the end of the, of the month, we were fourteen point four million, which does represent about seventy-five percent of our total budgeted revenue for the fiscal year, which is in line with the prior year period at this particular time. Our other general property taxes also, as indicated in here, indicated that we are exceeding our budgeted revenues, that's other general taxes. Our local taxes through the end of April continue to perform very well. We're about eighty-five percent of the budget. Compared to this time last year, we were about eighty-four percent. These taxes, of course, includes your taxes indicative of the economy, your sales in use, your cigarette taxes, and your meals and your lodging taxes. All continue to perform quite well. On pages one and two, I did provide some graphs for your information where you can see the comparison of April two thousand and twelve to April two thousand and thirteen. And at the bottom of page two, I tried to provide just a little, a little look ahead as far as where we expect to be at the end of June thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen. And I'm pleased to report for all of these particular taxes, as you can see, that we do expect to exceed our budgeted revenue projections for all of these taxes. On page three of the report, it just gives an update of the other local revenues, permits, charge for services, our miscellaneous taxes, excuse me, our miscellaneous revenues. And again, we don't expect to foresee any problems in those areas in terms of coming in as budget. On page four, in terms of our expenditures for the general fund, throughout various reports to city council, we've continually outlined efficiency savings that we have realized in several areas of the general fund. In instances where you do have expenditures that are exceeding last year this time, it's all mostly due to the timing of the contributions to several of the agencies and organizations. But again, you do have a fairly good outline of where you are expenditure wise for the general fund on page four. In the Warden Sewer Fund, there's nothing particular to report. We are two point five million at April thirtieth, which is in line with our prior year period also. As mentioned in prior reports for the airport fund, we told you that the revenues in terms of fuel sales typically perform better during the spring. And this report is, is indicative of that statement. As you can see here, from the month of March to April, the city was able to collect quite a bit of revenue from fuel sales. Again, that being the spring month, we collected fifteen thousand two hundred, compared to just seventy-seven thousand dollars from the period of February to March. So, again, that is what we expect to see in that fund. Moving on to the electric fund, tracking close to budget, we're about eighty-one percent of the revenue. I've reported previously where we do expect to see, excuse me, the increases in the sale of energy, which of course is going to be mostly offset by the fuel adjustment charges. Again, that's realized through the month of April as well. In terms of the cash balances through various budget sessions, we've went over this. For the month of April, we see that we have a positive increase, which we do like to see in terms of our cash flow in the fund. It increased in the month of April by forty-two thousand dollars or eleven percent from the month of March. And this is shown on page six of the financial report where you can see the cash balance in the month of March was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, compared to the end of April, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And just real quickly, if you look at the table two of, of page six, you can see at this time, we have a reverse trend because last year this time, we had actually lost money in the fund from, from March to April. So, again, we're seeing that positive trend upward. And this is continuing to reflect, the council members on page seven of the report, where you see the blue line and the red line graphs, and right at the end of April, where you see those bars cross, and actually that little red dot at the end of April indicates that you're a little higher than where you were this time last year. So, again, we're pleased to report the upward trend in the electric fund's cash. And I did report, as Mr. Martin reported, pardon me, at the last work session, that we took a peak in the month of May, and we did report that we are expecting to see a very sizable gain in the fund's cash. And at the end of May thirtieth, we do expect to see the cash in the fund increase over six hundred thousand dollars. So, again, that is very pleasing. And that concludes my report for the month of April, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Rollins?
The only thing I want to ask is that big increase you're talking about coming up that was due to a timing difference, is it not, in the cost of the fuel?
No, you mean the, the increase in the cash?
Right, that's to be coming up, that you're projecting for June, wasn't that due to?
I believe that, that has to do with Councilman Chitam. If you look at the actual expenditures in terms of the payment to VMA for the charges, in the prior month, that payment because of the, the colder weather was over nine hundred thousand. We did post only a payment of over six hundred thousand this month. So, that is a lot of the difference in that cash.
Right, it's just a timing difference.
Just a timing difference, that's right.
That's what I'm trying to drive at.
Yes, sir.
Melissa, have you ever, have we ever set a target of what electric fund should have in case we have an emergency? What, what kind of reserves should we have? Has anybody ever?
We did address that in a policy, didn't we?
Well, you have a minimum.
We have a minimum, but what do we need in case we have an emergency? Which I think is different.
Well, I think, you know, it varies depending on the emergency and expense. If you look historically, she's done a, a, a table of that, and we'll present that to you at the next work session. She's completed that now, we didn't get into it tonight, but she's looked at it from a historical perspective, and you'll see that it's all over the place. But I think that'll give you some guidance on where we should be.
Okay.
And I'd like to ask a question on that. Even if FEMA reimbursed us, we have to upfront some money.
That's right.
That is correct.
And, and good example on that is we are still waiting for all the money for the, which one was it?
Hurricane Irene.
Irene, it's taken us, soon be two years.
Mm-hmm, it would be almost two.
And we haven't gotten fully reimbursed yet, and that was a relatively small amount of money, several hundred thousand dollars, but we're still closing it out.
We're still closing it out, almost there, we're still closing it out.
Any other questions for Melissa? Thank you. And now, we're, we will move to old and new business. School board appointments for Ward Two and Ward Five. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that Franklin City Council appoint Nancy Godwin as the Ward Two School Board Representative and Jeanette Austin as the Ward Five School Board Representative for three-year terms, beginning July first, two thousand and thirteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to appoint the Ward Two and Ward Five School Board Members. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to ask, um, Mr. Burgess, did you say three year? How many years?
Three year.
Both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Both of these are full terms.
Oh, they are full terms. I thought.
Ward Six is going to be the partial term.
Okay, okay. Ward Six, the partial, oh, okay. That's all, just misunderstood.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And I have the same respect.
Aye.
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 And aye.
And aye. Earlier, I saw Ms. Austin, she must have left. But Ms. Godwin, congratulations to our newest school board member.
Congratulations, Ms. Godwin.
And now for our city manager's report.
Pleased to give you an update on something that's near and dear to all of us. We were just talking about the potential for storms and damages. We've been under some threats today, and Chief Mike can give us an update on the status. Particularly, I'd like him to comment on this, even though it's not directly related, it's indirectly related, to our benefits that we're receiving from the early warning system for today's comments in the media about flood advisories and potential on the Blackwater River. But it all relates, we are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, as reported to the council during the work sessions back in the fall, and more recently, last week when we had a, a work session. Staff has been working with, the mayor sat in with us in a meeting last week. We're looking at the various things that have been done by the Corps to study other things in the area, and we, we picked up some new information, according to the chief, that we hadn't previously had access to in this meeting, so it was fruitful. And we also came up with a plan of action for some things that we will be considering going forward. One of the things out of this, the end product will be, we'll need some council action to give us guidance on the next step. Without further ado, I'll recognize Chief Holt. Donald Goodman was also very involved in this and helped put it together, and I appreciate his efforts. And Russ Pace was involved in the meetings as well when he did the field tour of various facilities. So, Chief, if you would, just give them, first, if you would, an update on our current statute, status and what you were telling me today about the river.
Thank you. Well, I guess it's no surprise to everybody that we've been experiencing a lot of rainfall here lately with tropical storm Andrea and, and then just the different cells that have come through. Right now, the Blackwater River's looking fairly, fairly well. It looks like it's going to probably crest somewhere under twelve feet based on the forecast and predictions, which shouldn't cause any problems for us here in the city. Looking at the seven-day forecast, it would look like we've got some days for it to flow out and dry up a little bit, so it looks like we're going to be okay. But going into this event, we had two more rain gauges that we could, excuse me, two more river gauges that we could observe that we did not have this time, this time last year, which just helps you in regards to seeing what the river is doing above us because that's the water that we really have to be concerned about, is the water that's falling pretty much north and west of us because that's where the majority of the Chawan Basin that feeds into the Blackwater is going to impact. that feeds into the Blackwater, that's impacted us the most, is at. And it's just helpful to be able to look at those upstream gauges and to see if it has crested at those points, which lets you know if it's basically gone through the worst there, then we shouldn't see a whole lot more impact here if it's already, you know, crested north and to the west of us. But things do look good on the Blackwater right now. As far as the meeting that we were able to hold with the Corps, that we had the honor of having our mayor be a part of that meeting with us, it took place last Wednesday. And the purpose of this meeting was, as everybody knows, we went through the reconnaissance study on the river, and in that reconnaissance study, that's where it identified the lack of rainfall gauges, the lack of river gauges. I think there was a lot of surprise across the basin that for as large as the Chawan Basin is, there wasn't the number of gauges out there that we really needed to adequately forecast what the different rivers that make up, that are in the Chawan Basin could possibly do in a flooding event. So as a part of that reconnaissance study, a lot of that was identified, but the next step was to determine whether we needed to do a feasibility study that would actually come up with some, a mitigation plan to try to eliminate, eliminate or reduce the flood impacts on the various rivers that fall in the basin. Well, we weren't sure as a city whether we needed to move forward with a feasibility study because we knew some rough estimates that we heard was going to be roughly a half a million dollars, and we could be possibly responsible for a half of that amount for our local share. So we felt like we needed to be a little better informed on what this study could possibly cost and what it was going to tell. So we basically held that meeting just to become more informed, to make sure what we knew our responsibilities here in the city would be. At that particular meeting was our mayor, and we had three representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers, we had a representative from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, we had a representative from Virginia Department of Emergency Management, who is actually a mitigation planner, we had a representative from the USGS, and prior to this meeting, we did a tour of the downtown area and looked at the areas that are prone to flooding. We also looked at our mitigation efforts to this point, and all the representatives I just stated participated in that tour along with our city staff, members from, we had Public Works that participated in that fire and rescue, and then also community development. So we toured the area, and then we had the meeting, and it was very interesting to find out that a feasibility study was done back in 79, and I think the report, the most current report they have is dated like 1983. This was news, we had never heard about that, and I guess what we had pretty much assumed that there was nobody that is currently working with the city that was aware of that study, and whatever study existed probably got lost in the files in the flood of 99. So we have requested a copy of that, that study that the Corps actually has on file. But there's been a lot of discussion over the years about, well, the best way to prevent a flood in the city is put up a flood wall. Well, that was one of the things that that study looked at. And it was determined back in 1989 that that was not a very feasible venture, and they had cost estimates, and what they have, the Corps has even done, is they've updated those estimates to where you're looking at, depending on the length of the flood wall, you could be talking anywhere from $6 million to $10 million to put that in. And they also, to do that, to get FEMA funds to possibly help with that, you have to do a cost benefit analysis, and it didn't grade well in 1983, and they don't feel like it would grade well today. So the chance of us getting that as an approved project would probably not be that great. But they also discussed several things that we could be looking at to improve, and that would be our next step moving forward, would be looking at the different structural and non-structural projects that we could do that could improve our flood mitigation efforts here, here in the city. But they wanted us to look at, sort of look outside the box at different things because it could be some funding available that we could have a higher chance of receiving because we were looking at, we'll be more open-minded with our projects versus just trying to put up a flood wall, so to speak. And one of those things that they, that immediately caught their eye was our water treatment plant, because our water treatment plant is almost guaranteed to flood with any, you know, fairly significant flooding event that we have. So they asked the question, have y'all ever considered moving your water treatment plant out of the flood zone? And so some discussion took place that, you know, it might make sense to turn that into a pump station and have the sewage pump to the water treatment plant in Southampton County. And I know that's been some discussion, that that might be a project that we would look at anyway, but there's a possibility by using that as a flood mitigation project, which that would be a very good flood mitigation project, there could be some funding that could come from what they call Section 510 funds, which is another federal funding site, and I believe that's the Water Resource Development Act that makes up that Section 510 funding. But there's a possibility that, you know, to make that project become reality, we could possibly receive 65% federal funding to possibly make that a reality and take care of a problem that we know is a problem for us every time we have a flood, and would, you know, help protect the river too, because normally if our water treatment plant floods, then to keep the sewage and everything from backing up in the city, you're just letting it free flow into the river. So there's some environmental impacts there that could be, that could be addressed also, plus making sure that our citizens have sanitary conditions during a flooding event. So that was another thing we picked up on in this meeting, and another thing too that we looked at was cost shares, and we're going to start building a list of in-kind services that could be used, because it doesn't always have to be cash money, but another thing we learned too is that it doesn't have to impact you just in one fiscal year, you can spread it out over three fiscal years, I think is what they said. So that was, you know, good, good news also. But what we need to move forward is, we do need something from council stating that we would like to look at the possibility of continuing on with a feasibility study. And what they just need is basically a letter of support, letter of intent, and preferably in a resolution form that would allow them to move forward, and this would, this letter of support, letter of intent or resolution, there would be nothing binding financially. It's basically saying, yes, we think we need to look further, we need to go to the next step. And then what they would do is, then they would, that would give them the, basically the marching orders to move forward and truly define what a feasibility study would cover and what it would cost. And then at that point, we would know what our possible cost share would be. But they reassured us that nothing that they would do up to that point, there would be any financial requirements placed on the city. And then once they said, okay, this is what we envisioned, and they would give us a written document saying, this is what a feasibility study would go if we go, you know, fully and in detail with this feasibility study project, at that point, we would know what our commitment would be, and we would be able to determine whether we could meet that commitment. But by that time, we would have been able to identify all the different in-kind services that we could possibly take credit for, and it would, we would have a better feel for what type of cash money we'd be talking for that type, for that study. So I'm thinking our thing for us tonight is to sort of lighten y'all on what we've learned in the meeting and hope that at our June 24th meeting, we could possibly have a resolution to be brought before y'all to approve us, to just tell the Corps, yes, we're interested in y'all coming up with all the final details as far as what it would take cost-wise to put together the feasibility study, so we would have a good informed, be well-informed as far as how much this could truly cost us if we did go the route of the feasibility study. And the reason the Corps needs to know is, they have to either close out this reconnaissance study by saying there's not going to be a feasibility study, or keep the project open and moving forward by showing that there is a possible intent to do the feasibility study, and then that gives them the, enough justification to sharpen the pencil and put together their facts and figures of what a feasibility study could truly cost our locality. And Madam Mayor, you feel free to add anything to that.
Well, Chief Holt, I think you said it all. That was a thorough synopsis of that meeting.
I thought I was listening to Mr. Williams on cips.
I was going to say, he got his instructions.
Mr. Martin, you have.
Chief wrapped it up well with the action that we will plan to bring forward, a resolution, if that's your pleasure, for your consideration at the next meeting. It would be non-binding, but we see this as the logical next step. One thing that we, the Chief didn't mention, we also are looking at things like how we can, what would it require, and we've talked a little bit about this, but we want to get more into it going forward in terms of making it more accessible and less expensive for our folks to get flood insurance. I think we have, we identified what is 433 structures in the flood plain, only 17% have flood insurance, so we can, and those rates are expected to go up, and so we've got to figure out ways to try to help. That will require some regulatory enhancements, you know, as far as base flood elevation and things of that nature, which would require some action of the council in the future. But this is the next logical step and the next big thing in terms of preparing ourselves, as the Chief pointed out, the gauges, we've already seen benefits from that project that we partnered with our neighbors last year. One other thing they mentioned is that very few of the jurisdictions in the basin apparently are going to do anything. So that gives us maybe a little leg up in getting them to focus on Franklin if we jump forward and get involved. And secondly, it's, I think it's, as I mentioned to you in the work session, it's important that the council defend whatever action you take by saying that we carefully evaluated the cost and the cost benefit, just like the Corps does, before you make a final decision on what, if anything, we're going to actually spend money for.
I left the meeting so encouraged. I think I was putting a little bit too much pressure on staff to come back with a letter of intent for this meeting, but it will be addressed in the June 24th meeting.
So in my understanding, we're not going to explore our neighbors that are to the south of us and to the Isle of Wight that also benefit from this, to join in this with us, or?
Chief, if you have any comments?
There was, there was still discussion that that could possibly be, I think where
the differences were coming in is, you know, you've got some that are on the basin that are affected by the Maheron River and some that are affected by the Notaway. But I think what they were looking at is you could possibly still partner with the ones that are, that are affected by the same, same river, because once you started looking at the whole basin, everybody had their own different little issues, and naturally, our biggest issue is the flooding of the downtown area. So that's when it made it more difficult to maintain that partnership that we had going into the, going into, because, you know, it was a common thing, rain gauges and river gauges impacted everybody across the basin.
I also want to say, I think it's important to note that we are potentially flooded by the Blackwater, Southampton County's Blackwater River, not the city of Franklin.
Well, and I don't think it, that would be the determining factor of protecting our own. I mean, don't get me wrong, but I think it's also, will affect these other places by some of the things we do, will help them out as well. And I just hadn't heard us talking about maybe asking them, hey, we need to pitch in to help out with this or not, so that's why...
And it all, and a lot of that all comes down to what each locality has been able to mitigate, so some of the areas that, and I'm just throwing Isle of Wight out, for example, Isle of Wight County might have already been able to mitigate some of their areas along the river that always caused them problem, because if you look at the heaviest population along the Blackwater, it is the city of Franklin. And I know Isle of Wight County mitigated some residential properties, just like we mitigated some residential properties over on Bowers Road, that with what the river's going to possibly do, could maybe have impacted those residents, but we don't have to worry about those any longer because they were, those structures were acquired, and you've seen the same thing done in Isle of Wight, you saw some structures that's been acquired in Southampton County down in the Kingsdale area. So I think it all goes down, comes back to what mitigation actions have been taken, and some of the properties that might have been at risk back in 99 or 2006 is no longer a problem for them, and just like some of the same properties that we have done in the city, but we still got quite a more, quite a larger presence on the Blackwater than a lot of those localities do.
As I said, I didn't think it would take the place of protecting our own, but in the same token, we needed to, I think we need to explore everything because it doesn't come cheap.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Specifically on the wastewater treatment plant opportunity, that falls right in with our discussions with Southampton County, and that was probably one of the most exciting things to me, is the potential for getting federal assistance to connect our systems and do the infrastructure side of it. That really got me going because, and that would impact, and that directly, the planning grant that we've already submitted jointly with the county to get planning funds for that.
And right off, right off the top, that was one of the biggest things the Corps thought we can probably do for y'all the earliest before, you know, we could even consider the possibility of a flood wall. I mean, that was the water treatment plant project is almost, almost a no-brainer in the Corps' eyes, so.
And it was just a positive that we had already addressed it and put in the planning grant, and we were thinking on the same page as they were.
Was there ever, did y'all discuss specifics, like you talked about the wall, did you talk about the flood gates that, at the railroad that everybody keeps talking about?
Yeah, there was, there was actually, and I'm still waiting on the 83 project, but it was actually two different projects, and it depended on the length of the wall, and within the wall, there was so many, so many gates. And I want to say the 83 figures was just under a million, and then the longest wall with more gates was like, oh, just over a million, where they took all, they took everything that was, that they had done some rough engineering for in that plan and updated it to current day totals, and that's where the $6 million to $10 million came from. Some of the other things that we discussed as far as the floodgate projects, the problem we ran into those was the, some of the things that we were dependent upon, such as railroad beds to help offer the protection, you cannot use those to, as a part of your protection plan. And also, they ran the figures on those too, that the, it would have been, it would have offered very limited protection in regards to, because of the design, would have probably been less than like a 25-year event. And typically, they like to design for greater events, such as 50-year, 100-year events, so the, what we'd have gained for our investment wouldn't have been a whole lot of protection, plus we'd have been depending on structures such as railroad beds to give us the protection that you, you're not supposed to use those for that.
Why do you say you're not supposed to use it? Is that because it's not our property and...
Well, it's a combined, it's owned by the railroad and also was never... Well, it's combined, it's owned by the railroad and also was never designed to, for that purpose. It was just designed for holding the railroad tracks. And I do know for a fact during Hurricane Floyd, the railroad bed between us and International Paper did wash out. So, it just, because that is not what it's intended for, it's just not a water barrier, so to speak.
Did I not hear something about a possible collapse of that structure, the whole infrastructure of the track during that meeting? Did I hear something?
And that's the reason that, I mean, it's a known fact, I mean, we've seen it here and throughout other localities, I mean, a railroad bed is something that is very common to wash out. So, that's why you just got to be careful how you use that as a part of your protection plan.
If that became the weakest point, then you would blow them out by putting additional pressure on them, but I think you hit on it, the engineering feasibility, they're not designed to withstand that kind of pressure. We did have some discussion and I got some favorable comments, I think it was from the state folks, Donald or Vince, on flood, not floodgates, but backflow prevention on the drains, because that's been one of the concerns, that that might be a possibility, and that would be one thing we'd look at, because from what I gather, as the river goes up, then our drain tiles reverse and water comes in, so that might be something on a limited scale that might be something we could do. Do you have any comment?
Yes, it's more like a check valve design, to where if you have your normal flows, it's allowing the water to pass out, but then as the, say, the river rises, it, the pressure actually forces down on this valve that will not immediately allow it to start backing up into it. So, I've seen some, in the western part of state, there's a locality out there that's used a similar type design on a, it's, there is actually on a railroad trestle is where they're using it, but it's, there are, you know, devices out there that they said might, you know, be a possibility for some of our outflow-type ditches, because basically, the water's gonna take the least, the path of least resistance, and that's what happens, is our outflow ditches tends to be the path of least resistance for the water to start backing up in. But if you have something there that's creating some resistance, then that water's gonna tend to move elsewhere, which is hopefully downriver.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin, did you have other items?
No, ma'am.
All right. We will move now to council staff reports on boards and commissions, and I kind of want to start it off by saying that I attended, along with Mrs. Hilliard and Mrs. Murphy, Councilwoman Murphy and Hilliard, and Councilman Cheatham, I mean Burgess, I'm sorry, the Boy Scouts Celebration. It was an awesome celebration. And it was my pleasure to allow Eagle Scout Burgess to present the letter of support for that organization, and just ditto, kudos to Troop Seventeen, and it was just an awesome experience. I also spoke at St. Luke AME Zion Church yesterday for their youth day. I was their speaker, and I just want to say thank you to the church and Pastor James. That was an awesome experience, being their keynote speaker. On Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, at twelve noon, the hospital is planning their fiftieth celebration. I do have a service at eleven a.m., and that is at twelve noon, so I'm asking anyone that can go and represent the city to go. Mr. Martin has been asked to do greetings, as well as any, recognize any council members that will be in attendance. And that's it for me.
If I'm not mistaken, is that open to the public?
Yes, I called them. They said it was open to the public.
We had a joint meeting.
Oh, okay, well, you can take that.
I had several things that went on since the last meeting. One of them, I and Councilwoman Murphy went to the First Baptist Church, and want to thank them for receiving us with open arms and also for their certificate of recognition for the Franklin City officials, for our diligence, dedication, outstanding service to this community for the Year of Our Lord two thousand and thirteen, and I'd like to present this to the mayor. I was, we were all treated with as much love as you can ever get into a church, and I really appreciated it.
Thank you for this, and we will make sure that the city manager frames this and hangs this in an appropriate place.
And the mayor and myself and city manager also attended a joint meeting. We talked about several things that we would like to do together. Some of it was still talking about the inspections and how that's going along.
Joint meeting with?
With Southampton County. And of course, we talked about, as you've already heard, I'm not gonna go any more detail, about possibly talking about the sewer system and wastewater system, maybe joining up with that. And there's several things that we're looking and discussing and talking about, things that we can do together to help each other out. Also had a business-friendly meeting, and in the business-friendly meeting, we talked also about the inspectors, they were afraid that maybe Franklin would catch some problem about Southampton County being closed on Wednesday and for inspections, and we've assured them that once we're through all this merging together, that all those little wrinkles will be taken care of and they will go away. Both Southampton and Franklin are very excited about the merging of the inspections department, especially in light that we have been able to keep them fairly level this year with the budget, proposed budget, because the stormwater rules that they have out are very, very expensive, and each one of us would have to do that on our own. We also are sending out letters as a committee welcoming the new businesses. There's been a couple, I understand, an incubator that's recently come open and another one that is, or it's opening, and another one that's getting ready to. So, we're gonna send them letters as well and part of the whole business-friendly atmosphere. We've also discussed downtown. One of the things that was brought up was a need of trashcans on some of the side streets that they're nonexistent, and it's getting, gets kind of filled and messed up, so we need to look into that. We also discussed about the farmer's market and the pushes that are being made to get it open to full steam and hopefully become a working part of that downtown area. We discussed whether it should just be open on Saturdays or every day as it is right now. And in fact, I believe they have a man selling seafood there, I'm trying to think of his name, I think it's King Man the Fish Man, or something of that effect.
Dish Man.
Dish Man, thank you, the Fish Man, there you go. We discussed that, and Downtown Association's working very hard at that, as well as a new group in downtown that's part of the Downtown Association called the Downtown Divas that are coming up and trying new things, such as street sales and that type of thing. So, it looks like downtown is really starting to come forth with some new ideas and try to get things built up down there. And the only other thing I went to, I will defer to Councilman Burgess on, and he didn't remember.
I'm older.
Future-present. And that was it for me.
We had a future-presence meeting, Franklin's present, not future, Franklin's present, Tuesday night, and we're trying to get our arms around what the organization, what our little committee is gonna try to do. We don't want to step across the line and enter into the area that the school board and the school administration are under, so we're trying to figure out how we can have an impact on the community. We came up with some ideas, we came up with some more questions, we're having another meeting next Tuesday to try to bring in Smart Beginnings and the STOP organization to give us some information on pre-K, pre-K programs and what, how many kids there are and what impact that's gonna have along with the school system. So, we're just looking at different, a myriad of things, trying to come up with where we can best have an impact. So, we're, that's kind of where we are right now. We're still monitoring the truancy issue, but we're really trying to figure out what this committee can do going forward.
Anyone else? I want to ask Chief Holt to come forward with a brief announcement about the mayor's cup blood drive.
You heard that, Vince?
I'm trying to remember the date, Mayor.
I put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
It's Thursday, right? Thursday. Yeah, there's, every year in the region, they do a mayor's cup blood drive. Well, Franklin Fire Rescue is hosting the blood drive down at the downtown fire station. So, y'all come on out and give your blood so that we can report in that our mayor brought in several pints of blood to our blood drive. But this is, it is a great event, and I think I don't need to spend a whole lot telling you, I just, you know, how much one pint of blood can do for our community or somebody that needs it. And unfortunately, I can't give because I lived in England during the mad cow disease outbreak, so they won't take my blood any longer because of my time in England, but come on out and try out your blood, we'd be glad to take it.
In the hours?
It's, I want to say it's from Mark. Do you know the time, Mark? Do you know the time?
Yeah, I got the date.
Yeah, I'll send something out in an email, but I want to say we're starting around ten o'clock that morning, and we usually take blood as long as folks are still walking in.
I had suggested that it be put on the PEG channel, did you ever get that?
I know Leslie took the information, I'm not sure if it made it on there, but I'll make sure I send the email out to them.
Thank you.
At the firehouse?
Yes, downtown.
At the emergency downtown?
Down in the, it'll be out in the Bay Area where we park the fire apparatus.
Mayor?
Thank you.
One other announcement, our crack attorney just reminded me of, the Chamber and the Rotary Club are both sponsoring Congressman Forbes to be back in the community on Friday, June twenty-first, at lunchtime at the Country Club. So, if anyone interested in going, needs to contact the Chamber and make a reservation. Hope members of the council will be able to attend. I plan to go and welcome my congressman back, and he's gonna be receiving a national Chamber Award that day, from what I gather, so. Twenty-first of June, at noon on a Friday.
All right, the last thing I have, a friendly reminder to staff about the PTO slash health insurance committee. We want the committee to work, to meet, so that we can prepare a work session, goal-setting session, as it relates to health insurance and PTO. To the council, if there are any goals in the goal-setting session book that you wish to address for this budget season, please do so. We can pull it out, we'll talk about it Monday, just be mindful that we cannot go up on the budget, but we'll have to rework some things if it's something for this season. If not, the August, September timeframe will be an area for us to look at having another goal-setting session. And Chief Holt, you have been included on the list with our attorney and our city manager as lengthy speakers, I just want you to know that. Are all minds clear? If so, a closed-session motion, please.
I move that Franklin City Council meeting closed session to consider appointments to boards and commissions and for the evaluation of the performance of personnel, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals as permitted by Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one.
Thank you. We need a second. It has been moved and properly second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
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 An aye. We just want to say thank you for your attendance, and just a quick note that all of our meetings, with the exception of closed-session meetings, are